The flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. School committee members and student reports, research, sub, resource, subcommittee, Mr. Stevens.
No report.
Any questions from the committee? Seeing none, building needs, Mr. Stevens, once again.
Nothing.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, policy subcommittee, Mr. Horgan.
Hi, nothing to report. We're scheduling next meeting right now.
Okay, questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none. Student support subcommittee, Ms. LaBelle Pierce.
I'm sorry, we have nothing new to report right now either. We're gonna work on a new date, hopefully sometime next week.
Okay, no need to apologize. Personnel subcommittee, I have nothing to report at this time. What else have we got? Hang on. Is that it? No, that's not it. Student support, I said the personnel subcommittee, nothing. School personnel committee? No, nothing. Executive committee, no need. And now student reps. Student representatives.
Okay, I'd just like to say that today was the big start of hybrid, which we know for all is a very big moment, especially in these times. I would take say, and a lot, we can be negative as soon, but I would say it was a really good success. If you look at an unprecedented time we've been in, and I would say, this is my personal, but everyone I've talked to was just really happy to be back in school. I think it was done, you could tell it was done safely. There was, there was distance between desks, or your distance in the hallway, this hallways. I know in the high school, some only went up, some only went down, and there really was a nice sense of normalness, as much as you could have. In these times, I think it was just really great, and it was great for people to see others and to see their friends. And I think it was really, it felt like it's new, turning the page, which I can say is really good, a time like this, when everything is happening to have a sense of normalness. I think it, of all, I mean, that there was a lot that was new, so I think it went slow very smoothly. I think the day went well. I think the classes flowed well. So I say if there was one thing to really pick out and say, I think that could happen better at the high school, would be the beginning of the day. I feel like if there was more telling kids where to go for like the pool testing to go, to set up, because I think the beginning of the day was more chaotic, but just not as uniform. And as, you know, there's, you know, there's, you know, we're telling kids where to go and to tell, so I feel like that, if there was better, just a set plan of like, you know, when the, what to do when the kids arrive in the building, like where you go directly first, and then just kind of, you know, give more planning and to help out with that, I feel would be the one thing. But overall, I'd like to thank all that have been part of this and made it a reality. I think it went very well, really. I think there's nothing really, I don't think it could have gone any better, honestly.
Yeah, so that's all we have for today. So hopefully this is the start to a better and more improved journey.
Thank you. And I want to, I want to say thank you certainly to Superintendent Jokler and his staff and all the teachers, the Pittsburgh Education Association, and certainly the school committee for, for your vote on returning to hybrid. So thank everyone, thank you everyone. And thank you, student reps. Next is the approval of the minutes for the previous school committee meeting. I believe Ms. Greenlee sent out some changes.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the corrected minutes from the February 22nd meeting that was sent to us earlier today.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded to accept the minutes as amended. Ms. Greenleys, would you read the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mary De Natale.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Ms. Craigan.
Yes.
Mrs. LaBelle Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mr. Horgan.
Yes.
We are unanimous.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I say something?
Yes, yes.
I didn't jump, I didn't jump in fast enough, I'm sorry, but I just wanted to speak to the young people, to Andrea and to Jack Mara, and just tell them my heartfelt happiness that looks like the beginning of a resuming of some normalcy, and I really, really wish them well. I have received calls from people that had the same response to their children, were very, very happy to be back in school again. So all the best.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Any other questions? Thank you. Executive session, I don't believe.
Actually, we will have a brief executive session after the conclusion of tonight's meeting.
Oh, okay. Communications?
Sure. So I am also the chair of Stratton Players. It's been very disappointing for those of us in the theater community to endure the pandemic without having our theater families be active, but the happy news is that we are doing an original show. It is called Artists and Ancestors: A Dramatic Reenactment and Walking Tour at Forest Hill Cemetery. Among the historical personages who will be presented are Eleanor Norcross, founder of Fitchburg Art Museum, who will be speaking with Sybil Dean Fairbanks, who was a painter who lived up on Dean Hill, the great architect of Fitchburg, H.M. Francis, the master builder, Herbert Adams, the sculptor of the Boys and the Turtle Fountain and the World War Fountain, and many other sculptures all over the country and really the world. He designed the doors at the Library of Congress. His wife Adeline was an amazing writer, again, since late 19th century through the mid-century. They will be a presentation, as will Cyrus Thurston. Now Cyrus was the overseer of the poor. We had a title. And he was very active in, after Fitchburg became a city. So through his dates were 1860s to 1870s. He was also a music master and was acclaimed in the city for having these choruses and bands and bringing music to everyone. So Stratton Players will be presenting these short vignettes. They will be socially distanced. They will be out of doors, rain or shine. I am both writing and directing, and we have tryouts this coming Thursday and Saturday. So check out strattonplayers.com if you'd like to try out. We are looking for middle school age kids, right through citizens of a good vintage, so we can use anyone.
Yeah, that'd include a couple of us, yeah, that's right. Where are the tryouts?
So they're actually going to be on Zoom. The easiest way to do it, to keep people safe right now, we're going to be doing it kind of between seven and nine on Thursday, 11 and one on Saturday, and people will be able to read with some other folks. It'll be a small group on Zoom. And we'll, we'll see. The vignettes are between five and six pages each, which translates to seven to almost 10 minutes, you know, being theatrically presented. The audience will arrive at Forest Hill. They will be parking in the Elam side, and then they'll be taken on a walk. I just heard today that Neil Plouffe, who's a musician, is going to play 19th century dulcimer music for us. So this is real. I mean, Mayor, this is the first live theater in the Worcester County area, and we've got to make the most of that, because no one, no one else is doing live theater right now, but we figured out how to do it by doing it out of, out of doors.
Good going.
Thanks. I'll put in the chat, I'll put the information, so if anyone here would like to come and be part of it, we, I'd love to have people try out. It's gonna be great.
Thank you.
Yes. Yes, I just want to give a reminder of the upcoming event, the CAPS Collaborative Legislative Breakfast. It's a legislative forum to discuss the FY22 budget and public education legislative matters. This will be hosted by the CAPS Collaborative, sponsored by MASC, Division Four and Five, Mass, Connecticut Valley. And that's Friday, March 19, 8:30 to 10:30. And most of the area legislators will be in ball. School committee members, you should have received today the notice from MASC. And if you haven't, any questions, let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a brief communication.
Yes.
Just wanted to let people know that on Sunday, March 14th, the Public Library will be sponsoring a virtual St. Patrick's Day concert. Kate Chadbourne, who has done this before in person, will be doing it virtually. The, it's been a tradition to have a St. Patrick's Day concert, concert, and it's being funded by the Robert L. Rice Memorial Concert Fund and the Rice family. Mr. Rice was a longtime member of the Friends and a longtime supporter of the Public Library. Concert will be at two o'clock, and let me just scroll down. So the program is free. For information about this program, you can call the library at 978-829-1780, or you can go to the website, www.fitchburgpubliclibrary.org. So again, it's Sunday, March 14th, 2:00 p.m. Kate does music, does storytelling, she's a poet scholar. It's, it's a fun time. I've been to a couple of them when they were held in the library. Hope people can make it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. The, at this time, I'd like to present, and I believe she's joined us, Sheila, you're, you're on, right? You there?
Yes, I am there. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. It's great to see you.
Thank you.
I think a number of, of the members of the viewing public, along with certainly the school committee and the teaching staffs of most of our schools in the Fitchburg Public School System, know Sheila Badrebu, and we couldn't be happier and prouder to present her tonight with a citation from the city of Fitchburg. And I will read it, be it hereby known to all, that the city of Fitchburg, Massachusetts hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to Sheila Badrebu in recognition of your 10 years, seems like a lot longer than that, Sheila, of dedicated support and volunteerism to the students and families in our Fitchburg Public Schools. And that really doesn't sum it all up, but you've done so much over the years, and we thank you so very, very much for being such an outstanding partner in the community. The entire citizenry extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses the hope for continued good fortune. Given this 20, oh wait a minute, this is an old one. Yeah, I was supposed to give this to you, I think, two weeks ago. But it was given on the 22nd day of February 2021 by Stephen Aldina Towne, Mayor of the City of Fitchburg. Congratulations, Sheila, and thank you so much for all your efforts over the years.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Thank you. All right.
Any, any, any questions or comments to Sheila to tell her how wonderful she is? Okay. All right.
I will.
Yes.
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Boy, well deserved. I've known Sheila since the absolute beginning. It seems like our sons are the same age. She is a, and you could do anything. You, you could have fixed COVID, I think, if you'd been in there. Seriously, the organizational ability that Sheila has is, is really without peer in my experience. And it's a pleasure to work with her because she also anticipates, and I love working with people who, who are able to think strategically. But at every moment, it always was the kids first, the kids first, the kids first. So Sheila, I, I'm, I'm really proud to know you. You're just, you're just the most amazing person. You're a phenomenal mom, and I, I just, I'm so proud of you. And thank you for all you've given to the kids of Fitchburg.
Thank you, thank you.
Did I add something, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, yes.
Sheila, it's so good to see you. It's just been too long. And I will add that to what Sally said, you are a phenomenal mother. But you're also a phenomenal advocate, and you, you basically take anybody under your wing as mother and just try to, you know, try to solve problems. And I've always been so amazed by the amount of things you have that you're juggling at all times, right? And that is impressive. And despite all that, Sheila, I will laugh always thinking of us trying to be involved in those gala dinners. Like, as if there was anything else we needed on the plate, but you seriously did not need anything else on the plate. But I, we had a lot of fun doing those. So, so it's so good to see you, Sheila. Congratulations.
Sheila, we're gonna, we're gonna send you the citation. Either we'll mail it to your, Joan in my office will be in touch, okay?
Thank you.
And I just wanted to add that, you know, on the, you know, from the Special Education Department, you amaze us and, and put us to shame all at the same time in terms of your energy level and your, your ability to be involved 100% in so many different things. And just your compassion for families who are either struggling with similar issues or completely different issues, it, it always amazes us. So we really appreciate you and appreciate all the work that you've done with us along the way and your continued support.
Thank you. Sheila, please, would you grace us with a few words, please?
You know, I, I don't know if you guys can hear me. My computer is just as old as me now. Can everyone hear me?
Loud and clear.
Yes.
I just wanted to say thank you so much. I, I, you know, my mom raised me in such a way that she would never praise me for anything. If I got an 80, she'll say, well, why couldn't you get a 90, you know, shame on you, that type of thing. So praise always is a deterrent to me, but I am so grateful for everything that you guys have just said, because I, I feel like I should accept praise now, given, given what I've been hearing from my kids, and they, they talk back to me and they say, you know, you, you should get acknowledged for, you know, what you do. That should be a reinforcement to continue to do more to the community. But what I really wanted to say today was the number of children with special needs. When I started in 2009, 10 now, it's mind-blowingly, the numbers are off the charts. Whether it's mental health issues, whether it's social, social emotional needs, whether it's autism, Down syndrome, the list is endless of the children with special needs that we have here. And when I look at the panel, the number of people that I've grown with, you know, in terms of collaboration and making sure that we come to bridge the gap between research and practice, I couldn't be more prouder of the administration that's in here right now. They've really grown from the ground levels and, you know, truly putting parent collaboration in the forefront. And, you know, I want everyone to know that this is my passion. I'm not going anywhere until the last day I die. I will still be continuing to advocate for children with special needs. It's, it's time that a younger, you know, parent group came and joined the CPAC. But my focus now entirely is supporting the high school and being there for the 18 to 22 group, and then doing more collaborations with your office, Mayor, for the older population, because there's nothing for them. There's nothing for them. So I really want to do more for that field and us, and, and really, you know, when we look at our district and we see how many things we've, like, really aced in the field of special education, you guys should really be proud, because we still have a long way to go to bridge the research between gap and practice. But philosophically and ethically, with integrity and collaboration, we're doing really good. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On a, on a, not to close on a, but on a sad note, you may or may not have heard the passing of one of Fitchburg's truly, truly community people. Dave Clark passed away Saturday. I, I don't know if, apparently some of you didn't know that. He was a school committee member as well as city counselor. And he was a, he was a, a good friend of mine, and I was shocked. I received a call for, a Saturday from, from Sherry, his wife. And he had heart surgery and apparently developed a clot and took his life Saturday, at some point on Saturday. So we, please keep, keep an eye on the horizon. We're gonna be doing, the arrangements are still in, 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 in process. And again, I thought it was important for the committee to know. He was a former school committee member and, as I said, city counselor. I mean, we all know Dave at the, at the Crackerfield football games, also his work on FATV, along with the former, it's now PKZ, but WEIM, so true, true community guy and a, and a good friend. So he will be missed. Prayers go out to him. I'm sorry I broke the news to some of you. I thought by this time, everyone would have, would have known, but apparently not. Okay. Mr. Superintendent, is there any public comment individuals?
No, none that I'm aware of.
Okay. Well, now we'll, we'll go into the superintendent's report.
Okay. Oh, thank you. Again, I just want to say a personal thank you to Sheila for her hard work and dedication to the children of Fitchburg. Over the years, I've known Sheila, and she is a dynamo, and it is taking a handful of people to replace her and carry on her legacy. So again, thank you, Sheila. So next up on our agenda, we have the Winter Challenge winner in our Footsteps to Brilliance program. And tonight, to give a summary of that, we have Kathy Brady, who's a former principal over at Rhinegold with us tonight, and Cory Yang, the president and CEO of the United Way of North Central Mass. So Kathy, take it away.
Yes. Hi, everyone. It's so nice to see you all. Cory, as you know, is the president and CEO of United Way in North Central Massachusetts. And happily for us, the United Way sponsored a reading challenge, the Winter 2020 Reading Challenge. I'm gonna let Cory talk a little bit about that. And also Cory, if you want to mention our winner in Fitchburg, I'd be happy to also show the, the videos or the little, the pictures while you're doing that.
Yeah, thank you. I think we've got my, my colleague Nicole with some slides to share.
Okay.
So, thank you, Kathy. So I think we're ready to have Nicole's screen share at this point. I don't know if, there we go. Okay, great. So first of all, thank you so much for having me. It's great to be with you. Mayor, it's good to see you again. I want to just take this time to just acknowledge all of the work that Bob and his team have been doing, really over the last year, to ensure educational continuity for students and that their families have the appropriate resources to be healthy and to thrive. And Bob and I have spent time on the phone, spent time with his team, really thinking about how United Way can best support students and families in Fitchburg and beyond, and whether that's through nutritional access, whether that's through aligning our out-of-school time investments to the goals of Fitchburg Public Schools, and any other way that we can be supportive, you know, addressing issues of housing instability among students and families. These are all important ingredients to educational success, and so for us, we want to be a part of that in any way we can, realizing and recognizing that education and learning does not stop at 2:30, right? It continues at home, and it continues through parents, it continues through out-of-school time programming. And so for today, I just want to share a couple of things with you. First, as mentioned, we have been sponsoring a reading challenge. United Way has been investing heavily in the community, so let me just start off a little bit about United Way, just to back up. So our United Way of North Central Mass, we serve 22 communities in North Central, starting in Littleton and on out through Athol. Our work impacts about 80,000 people annually through the investments that we, we make, our special initiatives, our infert, information referral services through Mass 211, and our work with many of the on-the-ground agencies that you work with, and many of you. We distribute about $2 million in community resources every year. Some of that is through direct donor-advised funds, but mostly that's through grant-making through our annual campaign, of which many of you were familiar and have been supportive of. So thank you. We support about 40 organizations throughout our footprint to provide social services and educational supports to children and families. So, and next slide. So in thinking about, you know, one of the reasons why United Way is so focused on supporting efforts to promote educational success, just to back up, Footsteps to Brilliance is not just a tool that's being used in Fitchburg. It's actually a tool that's being used in 10 school districts in North Central Massachusetts. United Way finances the vast majority of that. The city and school department of Fitchburg invests significant resources in allowing and enabling footsteps to brilliance in, in your community, so you're to be commended for that. And, and we, we support that in any way we can. So, so in thinking about why this work and why United Way is in this space, I think, you know, many of you know that educational success starts early, and unfortunately, we see data to suggest that many children and families who enter into elementary school settings are at a significant disadvantage to their counterparts. And that is really across socioeconomic lines. You see, there's been a number of thousands of, of, of pages of literature on this, and we see it in our own backyard, right? There's some data to suggest that the word gap, that is, the number of words that children are exposed to by the time they get to third grade, that variance or that gap for upper income and lower income students can be as much as a million words, right? So, so children are entering kindergarten already at a significant disadvantage, right? And this then perpetuates that cycle of intergenerational poverty, when you, when, when, when that occurs and people aren't as successful in their educational pursuits as, as, and have the resources there as many of their suburban counterparts frankly. So Footsteps to Brilliance, what we, what we've seen in addressing literacy gaps in particular communities is that traditional book giveaway, right? And I think many people are familiar with that, right? You get a, you get a bunch of books, you set up some tables, you go to a supermarket and where there might be high concentrations of children and families, perhaps in lower socioeconomic areas, housing developments, shopping malls, libraries, you set up a table and you give away books, and then you give away some literature on how parents can read to their children, right? That has been the traditional 20th century sort of out-of-school time volunteer initiative to support educational success. And that's, that's, that's nice. That's great, right? But that is extremely limited. Once those families are provided with those books and that literature, they disappear. We don't know if they read the books. We don't know if they retain the knowledge. We don't know the situation at home, whether they're parents or speakers of other languages. We don't know if they're retaining the knowledge from reading these books, right? So what if we could take the, the concept of a traditional book giveaway and apply a 21st century frame to that? Where we know, once we, we're giving away the books, but they're unlimited number of books, right? We are monitoring and tracking readership, the number of books that have been read, both on an aggregate and macro, macro level, as well as the individual student level. What if you could track that in an aggregate way and an individual way? And what if you could apply math, science concepts, interactive learning? What if you could take that book giveaway and toggle it in English and Spanish, right? And so what we're able to do is take that traditional initiative and apply technology, data analysis, and an empirical lens to that work. And so now what we, what we have is this app that parents can download for free. Any parent in the Fitchburg Public School system can down, or any of the 10 public school systems in our region can download the app for free. And in that app are a series of exercises and books and interactive exercises with parents and students. And, and then parents have that resource set for students to engage in that, those learning and exercises. So on the backend at United Way, what we're able to see is, if you can see this slide here, since the start of the initiative, over 190 million words have been read in our region by young students. We are able to drill down to the individual level, as well as the school building level. And, and then we can share that information with the various school districts, right? So that's kind of how the initiative works. Next slide, please, Nicole. And you can see there are these.
This is actually a little outdated, this one compared to this one.
Okay, yeah, well, we could just move on. It's just the concept. No, next slide, please. Next slide, thank you. So as you can see here, no, next, yep. So you can see here are these as examples, right? A traditional book giveaway doesn't have, often doesn't have these interactive work exercises, right? So students can practice their handwriting. They can practice writing their name. They can practice cursing and print. And there's an interactive guide throughout the app that, that helps the student throughout that process. Next slide, please. And so if you look at what this experience is for a student, they're finishing a series of exercises and then they're finishing a series of exercises to show what they've learned. So they read a book. They have a little exercise on what they learned about the book. And then they can provide feedback on that, right? So what we've done with, over the last couple of quarters is we've had this reading contest. And we have students and families that are participating. And throughout each season, so we had a winter reading challenge. And we were able to track all the different users and we were able to, to identify the top three users in terms of exercises completed, words read, books read, and next slide, please. And so here's our winner for Fitchburg, Sammy Ramon. Sammy is a second grade student at the McKay. His dad speaks some English. His mom speaks no English. He lives at home with his grandmother, his mother and his father. First generation new Americans. And Sammy grew up with English as a second language. And he read over 20,000 words throughout this challenge. And so we went to his home and presented him with this award. Next slide, or do we have the video yet Nicole? Oh, and here's the video. So we are very, very proud of Sammy Superintendent Jokola, join me as well as the principal. And we're just, and a part of my, my team, we had a whole group sort of there clapping for him, applauding for him. And then if you look on the individual level, you can see Sammy's student performance here. So you can see against these different, these different areas, logic and reading, phonics, phonics awareness, reading comprehension, as you can see, the percentage of, the percentages within each of those. So we can see his progress and his scoring within this, this app as well. And so is there another slide Nicole? And so we're just so, you know, happy and pleased. And I have to say that, tell you that was one of the best days I'd had in weeks getting out to meet with that family. The, the dad and the mom were so proud. They were literally beaming. And this was a really spunky kid, really a lot of personality. And we want to do all we can to honor and to support our students. And so this is just one way of doing that. So we'll be launching another spring reading challenge shortly. And that will take place in April and May. And then again, we'll have first, second place, third place prize winners. And we'll be giving away Kindles and coloring books and different prizes, T-shirts. So all that we can do to kind of boost the usage of this, and then we're going to use this contest. Really, the contest isn't so much about identifying those winners as it is about evangelizing the tool and letting everyone know how, how terrific it is and getting folks to, to utilize it, right? So, so that's kind of footsteps to brilliance and the reading challenge in a nutshell. And so I just want to thank Fitchburg Public Schools, Bob and his team for being so supportive and proactive and innovative and helping to adopt and, and extend this resource to children and families. And lastly, what I'll say is United Way is here to support FPS in any way we can. So, you know, whether that's, again, as I mentioned, I'm having conversations around how, how best to support children and families during this unprecedented time, access to nutrition, access to behavioral health services. What are those key ingredients to success that we need as a community to support our school, our teachers, our system, our school system and students and families? So United Way is here. And we're ready to continue to support and partner with you in any way we can. So I'll stop there. Thank you so much. Okay Cory, I want to, well, first of all, thank you for all of the United Way's support over the years and making this program a success. And look forward to, well, talking with you soon to continue the partnership and really, I'll say a historic time as students today started returning to school in the hybrid model. Having a partner like United Way, going forward to, you know, help meet our students' needs will be key because we can't do it alone. Absolutely. So any, just any questions on the product or the, the contest at all before we, we peel out?
Hi, this is Jean. Cory, hi, nice to meet you. And I wanted to also say thank you for all the support you've given to the schools through the many different programs that you've supported. And we, I feel like we have, you know, we've kind of grown up a little bit with the Footsteps to Brilliance because we've seen it over the last few years. And I know Kathy, is Kathy still on the? Yeah.
Kathy's been instrumental, yeah.
Yeah, and has reported to us, you know, throughout the launch and now as it's getting more, I guess, integrated. I'm still really anxious to see the data of when these kids are kindergartners and first graders and second graders, just to see what impact it's having. Because I think part of the beauty of that program was that our kindergarten teachers or our pre-K teachers were going to get that information. And we were going to be able to start to build a profile of kids, you know, like an academic profile of kids even before they step into the building, right? Like so, I'm, I'm anxious to see those over the next couple of years. But I just wanted to say thank you because you, your organization is a lifeline for schools. So thanks.
And I thank you for saying that Jean. And what I will say is that is, that is exactly spot on in terms of the next phase of evolution for this effort is to really track down to the sort of student level when they come in and they've utilized this. What are the benefits of that in terms of performance within the classroom? And, and then how do we sort of market this to those populations that I think need it most? And so establishing a causal link between the utilization of this tool and success in MCAS or success in other metrics, I think that's that next day, that next level of evolution. And to your point, once this is up and running and we're able to get more longitudinal, frankly, I think we can drill down on that data. And lastly, I think we're, we can have conversations with our colleagues over at Fitchburg State around conducting some analysis for us on how best to leverage this moving forward and what are those lessons learned? So that we can integrate this most effectively. So. Hi Sally, I think, did you have your hands up? I think you're on mute. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I just, I just figured that one out. Thank you. So I am really glad to hear this report because we have had Footsteps to Brilliance in our programs for some time. And to see that data, I concur with, with Jean about seeing how kids are doing once they enter our system. I am really charmed by the books that kids are writing as well. I work as a writer and a journalist and that early literacy is, is so key. And I think that, that interaction, I know from talking to preschool teachers that this has really been a success and that parents are buying in and it becomes part of what they do and, and how they do it. So I also wanted to ask, I know that we've got it in, we have this in our, in Fitchburg and we have it in our region. But where else is there Footsteps to Brilliance? Are the other gateway cities benefiting from this? Did they choose to do it?
Yeah, well, what, what I would say is that we are very active in, we, we are very active in Gardner, Winchton, Air Shirley, Athol, our presence isn't with the school system yet. We're actually working more closely with the library and some other school time programs there. And we are in Littleton. And so, and we can get you a list of those towns. But our winners are from Air Shirley, Winchton and Fitchburg. And our high, our higher utilization rates we're seeing in Lemonster and Fitchburg.
I'm, I'm really glad to see that because we do have what, what's called the churn rate, which is the, the rate at which children might leave our school and enter another district and then return and so forth. And so that this is something that they're encountering, that their families are encountering, and it's a, it's something that's consistent. I think it's such a boon. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Oh, and I think that's, that's a good point too, because student mobility is obviously a major issue. And so students who might, you know, have housing in Lemonster and then have to move over to Fitchburg because that's where their parents found an apartment, or they have to move over to Athol, they, they will have continuity of access with this tool. So, which is important. Unfortunately, if they move out of our region, it may be a different story. So.
Right. Thank you.
Cory, I have a question, or not a question, a comment to make.
Yes.
Yes. Rosemary Reynolds here. Cory-
I'm Miss Reynolds.
Hi. As you were speaking, and you, you're speaking about future analysis and where to go. There might be, you, you spoke of this young man's parents. The mother speaks no English, the father speaks some. Wonder if there might be some component within the stories, interaction between the mother and the son or the daughter. Is that what I'm saying?
Yes.
Like draw them in, rather than simply what, yeah, okay.
Yeah, and that's a good suggestion. And these, I think, forgive me, is it Bangladesh? I can't remember the, the first language of the family, but, but it's not Spanish, right? And so, you know, that's another limitation is that it's in English and Spanish. For, you know, resource limitation purposes, we, we have to hit a certain threshold before we're able to translate it into those other languages. So.
The first language of the family is Bengali.
Thank you.
And in response to the request about having some research done, we're working, partnering with Footsteps to Brilliance right now. And Superintendent Jokla and John Thompson have been assisting with that. We're getting to provide them with some data of children who've used this with efficacy prior to kindergarten and we're going to be measuring it against some data that we collect on all children in kindergarten. So we're hoping to have all that information for you. And with regard to Sammy, he's been using this since pre-K. He's one of our pre-K students. And he used it a lot last year in kindergarten and the spring when we were put on hold. And as a first grader, he's using it, but predominantly through his EL teacher. And so what we are seeing, and good news for Sally, the books that she was interested in earlier, the teacher is getting back with those students this week. And the books that you've looked at will be edited by the students using a, a group effort and bringing them all together. And hopefully they will, and they've said okay to having their pictures published on the front of the book. So we're just waiting now that they're back in school for those books to be edited for you to take off with your publishing work.
And just the fact that the winner, the, the, the student who read the most words in the entire Fitchburg Public School system was in a student whose first language is not English. And a student who'd been receiving the mentorship and the support from a FPS faculty member. So that just says a lot about your team and how much they extend out and the level of student support they provide, which is just incredibly, incredibly impressive. So.
Um, yeah, just a, it is impressive because we have, we have amazing teachers. Kathy, you and I will catch up in a bit because we did get Fitchburg Cultural Council and Lemonster Cultural Council grants. So we are going to be, the Swan Hope Press, which is a local micro press, is going to be publishing these books. So every child whose book we publish, we will make multiple copies. Those copies will go in the classrooms. The child will get like a half dozen books to share with their family so that it then becomes, you know, an artifact of heritage. And we're thrilled. So thank you. Kathy, you and I will catch up.
Good job.
Well, it's hard to be with you folks. And so just, you know, thank you so much for having me and we look forward to working with you just to build a brighter future for our students and families and we're committed to bring. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you Cory. Thank you Kathy Brady. So moving on, on the agenda, today was first day of hybrid, March 1. Was the day that we hit the reset button here in Fitchburg. We welcomed back about a quarter of our student population to the schools where our staff was eagerly awaiting them. And I don't think I've ever seen so many happy faces in one day, at least in the last 11 and a half months. And really, as the, the students said, glad to hear that from their perspective, they thought it was a smooth operation and whatever concerns they had dissipated. And I'd like to thank everyone on Cabinet who are, are team champions, were Pam Rivers, Craig Schalfer, Rowan Demange, Adam, Runda, and Alicia helped out as, as our principals who in each of their specific schools made sure the process was tailored to their schools. And, you know, we are doing a second round of pool testing on Thursday for the cohort B students. And the Concentric by Ginkgo firm, everything was smoothly as, as I guess billed to us. You know, we will be able to take advantage of this service at, on a no cost basis through April 18th. Originally that was supposed to expire on March 31. And, you know, just kind of as a public service announcement as we, you know, have students return back in and as we're, you know, continuing to build confidence that the schools are safe, as Jack mentioned earlier. The city of Fitchburg on the Board of Health website does have an application form or waiting list form to be vaccinated. So when vaccine is available. And I understand from Board of Health Director Steve Curry that, that form is also in the process of being translated into Spanish as well.
Can you replay that point that you just made? I don't understand what you just said. So there's a form that, who's filling that out for?
On, on the Board of Health's website, there's a form for anyone who is interested in receiving the COVID vaccine in Fitchburg.
Or Fitchburg teachers in Fitchburg?
For Fitchburg. This, just, I'm just saying this as the public service announcement for, for the city. It could be teachers residing in Fitchburg. I know there are efforts underway to try to get teachers vaccinated, although there's nothing to announce yet. But this is separate. This is for the general population watching on TV tonight.
Okay. And this is separate from the Massachusetts state website?
It's in addition to.
Go ahead Steve, you want to clarify?
Sure. What we're trying to do is reach out to our elder, elder folks and, and just try to get them a more local connection. And it, it's been helpful. We have about 1,300 people on the list actually. And you identify, when you do sign up to be on the waiting list, you identify what phase and group that you're in, whether it be 75 plus, 65 plus, two cool mobilities.
Could I ask about that Steve? So since we're bringing it up, are those people who need like transportation to a shot, like?
That, we're also, we're also trying to work on that. We're forming some partnerships with our local Medical Reserve Corps to try and get out into those, figure out who those homebound people are that can't get out.
Steve, we're also going to be working, Jean, Jean, we're going to be working with MIRE as well to see if they can, and I'm sure they will, they'll, they'll assist us in getting some of those folks. But you know what? What we're trying to do here is build up a database. So what, because what people, please try to understand, we're not holding anything back here. The problem is we have no supply. That's the issue. It's not because we're not organized, we are. It's just, we do not have the vaccine. It's that simple. Now, I don't know if it's a federal issue or if it's a state issue, but, you know, I can stamp my feet and hold my breath, it's not going to change anything. So please bear with us. What Steve's doing in his folks, as I said, developing a database. So when we get those large amounts of vaccine, we can start notifying these folks, listening to what their limitations are and working with them to get them in, to get that shot. And now that we've got the Johnson and Johnson, that's a, a single shot, it'll certainly simplify the whole process. Where now with Moderna, you've got to come back for that second shot, so. A little bit more complicated, yeah.
Mayor, could I just clarify, what you want people to do, particularly people in the city who really are homebound or older or you want them,
Fifty-five and older.
You want them to be going to the site on the Fitchburg Board of Health, but you also, they also should be going into the state site too?
Both sites are.
I suppose they could, you know.
Both sites are available on our, it's actually not on the Board of Health webpage, it's actually on the City of Fitchburg homepage.
Oh, okay, thanks, okay.
And both, both sign up avenues are there and I encourage people to use them both.
Okay. Well, thanks. You hadn't known about that.
And if folks do need assistance, you can certainly give us a call and we can help you sign up.
Thanks, Steve. So that's really all I had for the hybrid opening update. I think Jack Merritt did a, a great job of telling the story and, you know, from a district perspective, things went very smoothly. The buses ran on time and we're ready for day two.
Bob, could I ask a question for members? I'm just kind of curious and do you have a sense, and I don't know if John, do you have a sense or Eva, like in each of the schools, what are the numbers for like cohort A versus cohort B? I have a feeling it's just kind of like my own unique experience where my daughter's in cohort B and I think there are only going to be two or three other kids in a class with her, whereas in the cohort A. So I imagine it's probably very unique to grade, class, like school. But do you have way more members in cohort As than you do in cohort Bs in all the schools?
John, do you happen to have those numbers handy?
We looked at the numbers and I think they're pretty even, Eva, correct me if I'm wrong, we looked at those, I think, last week or the week before and they were, they were pretty close.
So when those originally, when those, they were originally put into cohorts, i- it was done so that the numbers would be as close to even as possible. There's been some changes to those cohorts, but, but not, not much. So they're, they're relatively close.
And they also, they made sure that families were in the same cohort or tried to across the district, you know, so they weren't, some kids, you know, some kids in the family going two days and some not and so forth.
Yeah. I, I think it's just, it just kind of struck me. I think that when she goes, she has just two other kids in a class with her, so. But that's just the way things work. So, but maybe during our student support meeting, we could kind of hear about all the different schools, so I won't take any time here. I just was curious, thanks.
We can update you with those numbers.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Dan?
And my question is, I'm happy, I was happy to hear the report from the students and your report, Bob, how well today we went. It's good to have students back in the classrooms and thank you to everybody, your staff, the teachers, custodians, nutrition services, et cetera. I, I guess my question is, and maybe this will be discussed at the next school committee meeting, is in regards to what the Commissioner of Desi and the Governor has proposed that everybody be back in school in April. And I know it has to be approved by the Department of Education and I'm just wondering if, if they approve it and say this has to happen, I'm wondering, what is our plan? How does that affect everything? I don't know if you receive more information than what I've read in the papers and have seen on the news. I just, I'm just wondering what's going to happen come April 1st if this becomes a reality.
So the Board of Education is scheduled to meet sometime over the next couple of weeks. I don't have the exact date. Like everything else, it's subject, you know, to local bargaining. So actually tomorrow, there's a conference call I'll be participating on to learn some more about this situation. And I'll have more information for the school committee meeting in two weeks.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
So moving on, we're going to close, I guess, the, the report with just a, a brief presentation by John Thompson, Assistant Superintendent of Tutor.com. This is another tool that we're providing to our, our students and families. And with that, John, I guess the screen will be yours here.
It's actually not letting me share my screen. It says I don't have rights.
We'll be meaning to talk to you about this, John.
This is my, my warning here. It's all right. I, I can, I can talk about Tutor.com. So as you all know, we actually have been looking to implement Tutor.com for the last couple, couple of weeks. I think we started talking about it around December. It did take, take some time, but I'm, I'm happy to say we finally launched Tutor.com right before February vacation. And just to review, Tutor.com is a free homework help tutoring service that is available to all students, kindergarten all the way up to grade twelve. So anytime students need to help with an assignment, they can log in and in less than a minute, they get actual access to a live tutor. The great, one of the great features about Tutor.com is that it is available in English and Spanish. And students can have access to it twenty-four hours a day and seven days a week. So this is a free service. I did have a video to show you. I actually have a video out on social media, media in addition to our school website, district website that actually tells students how to actually log in and get help from a free tutor. So that is available. So right now, I just wanted to share some data with you. We had about forty-five sessions so far since we launched right before vacation. It's about ten hours. The majority of students that have been using it are all mostly middle school students. We haven't had a lot of high school use yet. So I'm hoping to actually see that increase since we do not have office hours available in our hybrid model. So we got to make sure our, our high school students know that this is an option. What's really great about, you know, for all students, but specifically for the high school, is that if they need, if students need to write a paper, a term paper, they actually can submit it. And in less than twelve hours, they actually get feedback based on the, the topic that they had to write about from a tutor. So that is available. In addition, there's also AP practice exams for students to take. So this is a really great service and I'm hoping that a lot more students will, you know, log in and use this. We got some feedback and right now it's about eighty-five to a hundred percent of students who have used it have said that this is a great resource. The tutors have been positive, the tutors have been helpful. So I'm looking forward to seeing the increased use and students' feedback on this. So I just wanted to make sure the community knows that this is available. And I apologize, my screen wouldn't share.
It sounds like a great service, John, and thanks to everybody who was involved with the process of making this available to all of our students. It's pretty incredible that it's K through twelve, twenty-four seven. It's very impressive and like you said, John, I hope more and more of our students take advantage of this service that we're providing. Thanks again.
Thank you.
John, could I ask, so these are live people, right? These are two things that you're connecting to, okay. And how do they, like, so if somebody wanted to go on and do AP or the next kid wants to come on and do, I don't know, a science review, like what, how are they matched? How does that?
What you do is the child or the parent can actually put in exactly what type of tutoring they're looking for, what grade they're in. If it's an AP class, if it's a science class, a middle school, whatever, they can actually, there's a dropdown menu. And then, and below that, there is another box you can check if you need it in English or Spanish. And then you hit submit and then in less than a minute, a, a live tutor comes up for you. So there's also a, a service too, if, if they don't, if they know that they need help every, let's say Tuesday night at seven o'clock, they also can actually schedule that time with a selected tutor too. So that's available.
And it's open to every kid now?
Every kid, every kid can use it, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and the last item on the list and really the only action item is to revise the agreement that Fitchburg is a participant of the Keystone Educational Collaborative, formerly known as FLAC, and that the school committee tonight will vote on allowing the acceptance of Narragansett Regional School District joining the collaborative. So short and sweet are the two words for tonight.
Well, Bob, is adding Narragansett the major change to the agreement?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
So do we need a motion before we go on to executive session then to adopt the policy?
Yeah, there's, we have one action item to, for the school committee to, to accept Narragansett.
Make a motion to accept action item twenty-one dash forty-eight?
Have we, did we lose the mayor? The mayor's on mute?
Mr. Stevens, can you?
Yes. No, I, I just, I just,
Mayor's here.
I made my lofty statement and no one was listening because I was muted.
Whose fault was that, Mr. Mayor?
I thought Ms. Greenlee's was ignoring me. I mean, it's, it was, it was the first time, but I mean, I know that, I know.
I was waiting for somebody else to jump into the fray.
Well, we had a motion made and seconded to accept Ms. Greenlee's. Would you read the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor DiNatali.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Ms. Cragan.
Yes.
Mrs. LaBelle Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mr. Horgan.
Yes.
Yes, unanimous.
All right, thank you.
Hey, now a motion to go into executive session only to return to adjourn.
Okay. Ms. Greenlee's, would you have a?
Yes, sir.
Reading the roll, please.
Yes, sir.
Motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Motion. Let's vote on the motion.
Second the motion.
All right, seconded.
Is Pierce the first?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor DiNatali?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Cragan?
Yes.
Mrs. LaBelle Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Horgan?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Okay, and then I guess I would just ask, so I guess we can adjourn and if FATV can confirm that the live feed is coming to a conclusion.